Hello, everyone. Welcome. My name is Juan Carlos Ocaña-Chiu. My pronouns are he/him/his. And I will be your moderator tonight. I work for the city of Portland. I wanted to take a moment to welcome everyone to the District Commission's public hearing. This is the Wednesday, July 5th, public hearing of the Independent District Commission. And the purpose of tonight's meeting, uh, hearing, excuse me, is for community members to provide testimony on the Independent District Commission's draft district plan for Portland's geographic districts. Before we get started, I will take a moment to go over some meeting logistics. This meeting will be recorded and will be posted online. We have an American Sign Language and Spanish Interpretation Service available tonight. To access the Spanish interpretation, please go to the interpretation table and sign in to receive a simultaneous translation headset. The table is located on the back by the entrance that you came through. To sign up for public testimony, please go to the signing table as well at any point, and we will put you on the list to give testimony tonight. Again, the table is by the entrance. For our time together, our co-chairs will provide us with an educational presentation to give you an overview of the commission's proposals, and then we will open the public testimony for community members to provide your testimony and feedback. We will conclude our evenings, our evening, with some closing remarks from the commissioners. There are other ways for you to provide and for the public in general to provide input. The public comment input closes on Saturday, July 22nd. We are holding two in-person hearings in each of the proposed districts to receive your feedback, and we will also hold one virtual hearing citywide for anyone to provide feedback. You can also submit your public comment by email. The email address is districtcommission@portlandoregon.gov. So that's districtcommission, one single string, at portlandoregon, one single string, dot gov. And you can also call 311 and request information and to provide input right away. And finally, you can also fill out a comment, a public comment card here and/or on our online form, or mail written comments to the Office of Management and Finance, Attention of the Independent District Commission, 1120 Southwest 5th Avenue, Room 901, Portland, Oregon, 97204. I'll repeat the address: Office of Management and Finance, Independent District Commission, 1120 Southwest 5th Avenue, Room 901, Portland, Oregon, 97204. And now I will pass it over to our independent, one of our Independent District Commission's co-chairs, Commissioner Judd, to begin the educational presentation.
Good evening, everyone. You hear me okay? Cool. Welcome to the Independent Commission's public hearing. We will talk about the draft plans. We want to thank you. This is the best part. I want to speak for all the commissioners here. This is the best part, to have the opportunity to speak to you and get your feedback. Now, we're going to do a brief educational presentation, but we try to move through this fairly quickly just so that we can get your, have enough time for your feedback. Is that okay? Great. So first, the, from where we were to where we're going in the future. It used to be that Portland's elected officials lived everywhere in the city. They've elected by voters across the entire city. Under the new system, approved voters in the November 2022 election, there will be four geographic districts created. So that's our responsibility, is to create those geographic districts. So there will be now 12 district-based city councils rather than the current five at large. The Independent District Commission was created by voters-approved amendments by the city charter. It is the task with preparing, it is tasked with preparing and adopting the district plan for the city council elections, starting with the election of November 2024. This primarily involves working with the community and professional experts to design the district maps that we place into the next district cycle in 2023. So the next opportunity they have to revise these maps will be in 2030, sorry, 2030. The Independent District consists of 13 voting members as well as alternates and reserve alternate members. All of us were selected through an open, community-wide application process, appointed by the mayor, and confirmed by the city council in January 2023. As the name suggests, the Independent District Commission is fully independent community body authorized to create the district plans for the city of Portland. The district commission has a unique authority. If nine of the 13 voting commissioners approve the plan, then it's adopted. However, if after two votes, the district commission can't reach the nine-vote supermajority, then the most recent version of the plan is referred to the city council for its consideration and adoption. As the district commission prepares the district plan, we are guided by the voter-approved charter requirements and state and federal district laws. We must use the voter-adopted district criteria and any additional criteria we set forth. We are required to hold nine public hearings. One public hearing was held early in the process before we developed the district maps to seek public comment on whether any additional planned criteria should be considered. We voted not to add additional criteria to those specified in the adopted chartered measure. Eight public hearings must be held, two in each of the proposed districts, before we vote to adopt the district plan. This is the first of the eight. The draft plan was made available to the community one month before the first of eight public hearings takes place on July 5th, and we can't vote on the plan until one month after our last public hearing takes place on July 16th. We're actually holding nine public hearings instead of the eight because one Zoom hearing was added to provide more opportunities for widespread community input beyond what we elicited at the in-person hearings across the city. The commission must adopt its district plan by no later than September 1st, 2023. We've received questions from community members about whether we can take more time, but the timeline was established in the voter-approved measure, and I don't think any of the commissioners would want to go beyond that time point. These next few slides are somewhat technical, and we're sharing this so you have a broad understanding of what guides our work. Creating initial districts and redistricting wants a decade. Our processes controlled by two federal laws, the Equal Protection Clause and the Voting Rights Act. Under the Equal Protection Clause, the creation of initial districts and periodic updates of districts must be substantially equal in population. This requirement is known as one person, one vote. The primary tool used in the redistricting process is the federal census. The U.S. Constitution mandates a census every 10 years to count every resident in the United States. The census includes basic demographic data, including total population by age, race, housing, and housing occupancy. Because district populations shift over time, district boundaries must be redrawn after the census is administered every 10 years to ensure that each person's vote remains equally weighted. We have received questions from community members asking us to consider how populations in the city might shift in the future, but we must work with data from the 2020 census and leave that to the next redistricting in 2030. Voting Rights Act of 1965 requires districts that do not discriminate on the basis of race, color, or membership in a protected language minority group. Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act prohibits district plans that are intended to be racially discriminatory or that are shown to have racially discriminatory results. The commission is required to create the district plan using the voter-approved district criteria. As shared earlier, the commission decided to, decided not to add additional criteria to those already approved. The voter-approved district criteria requires that the district commission ensures that each district, as nearly as practicable, is, one, contiguous and compact, meaning each district is one geographically connected piece without any unconnected elements. The smallest element that we are working with to design these maps is a census block. Two, it utilizes existing geographical political boundaries, meaning natural and man-made boundaries such as highways, mountains, and rivers, which already often divide communities and make innate borders, or political boundaries like legislative county or school districts. Three, not divide communities of common interest. Communities of common interest are recognized by academics and jurisdictions throughout the country as groups that share a common policy concern and would benefit from being districted together. Dividing a community of interest often leads to a decreased ability to advocate for their community's needs or priorities. This is four, is connected by transportation links, meaning highways, roads, streets, or public transportation. And five, is of equal population, meaning each district has the same number of people. The commission is working to create a district plan with less than 5% deviation in population between districts. The district commission must also ensure that no district will be drawn for the purpose of, one, favoring any political party, incumbent elected official, or another person, and, two, diluting the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority group. The criteria prescribed in the charter are similar to what was, what has been upheld in federal courts regarding the formation of political districts across the country. In creating each district, data is used to define the criteria. On the screen, you can see examples of some data sets that can help define district criteria. Some criteria require using specific data sets. For example, population and any Voting Rights Act-related issues must use the data released in the 2020 Decennial Census and the most recent American Community Survey. The American Community Survey is an annual survey at a smaller scale than the census that compiles additional demographic and socioeconomic community data. Some data sets can be used to help define multiple criteria. For example, school district boundaries or high school enrollment areas could be considered an existing political boundary or a community of common interest because its quality and effectiveness is, is a shared concern. The criteria regarding communities of common interest is where we most want community input from all of you. You know how you define your community by your shared experiences and concerns. We want to hear about those. The district commission has been working with the technical redistricting consultants to gather different data sets to help inform the district criteria. The data sets you see on the screen are not representative of all the data commissioners have been using. Others also include socioeconomic status, voter precincts, public transportation routes, homeownership versus renters, access to public goods and services, and much more. The district commission is committed to ensuring that the, the, the redistricting process is transparent and community-driven. Portlanders have engaged in a variety of ways to inform the creation of the draft maps. We've already received over 3.5 hours of public testimony, hundreds of public comments, and almost 200 draft map options submitted by members of the public through our online mapping tool. Commissioners also attended community-led redistricting events, held individual community, community meetings with leaders, and spent hours reflecting on what we've heard. The commission has made a deliberate effort to center the voices of those who have not historically been a part of city decision-making. With that background about the district commission's work process and a little detail about redistricting, we're going to turn things over to Commissioner Lorente to talk about our draft maps.
Awesome. How you doing, everybody? I hope you're all well, staying cool and hydrated. I'd like to invite us all to just to take a collective breath because that was a lot of information, and I would like to thank our co-chair, Commissioner Judd, for kind of grounding us in that informative recap, so thank you. Now, I would like us to pivot to the draft district plan and a discussion of the draft maps themselves. So as Commissioner Judd showed on an earlier slide on our timeline, on June 1st, the district commission released three draft maps for your consideration that outline the possible boundaries for what these new districts can look like. So each of these three maps, named Alder, Cedar, and Maple, adhere to the district criteria that voters approved last November and are directly informed by the community input that we've received to date. Now, if at a glance you notice that the three maps look relatively similar, that is because these maps share a list of common themes and characteristics, which I will describe for all of us now. So one of the key commonalities you'll see across all three of these maps is that the communities east of I-205 are all connected in the same district. And if you look at how the district is drawn, this has also enabled us to make sure that the four non-Portland public school districts, which are Park Rose, David Douglas, Reynolds, and Centennial, are all also connected in that same district. If you look at the western border of this easternmost district, which runs along I-205 and 82nd, this allowed us to also preserve the interests of the Jade District as well as the Lentz Neighborhood. If you shift your attention now from that green eastern district to the yellow district, our north Portland district, you will notice another commonality, which is that the neighborhoods of north Portland are all in a single district, with the exception of those included in the Park Rose School District. So if you focus your attention around where the airport is, putting the boundary around the airport like that allowed us to make sure that the Park Rose School District, like I said, was connected in the east Portland district. It also allowed us to make sure that the businesses and communities and homes on the north and south sides of Columbia Boulevard are also connected in that north Portland district. If you follow the I-84 MAX line towards the Steel Bridge, you will notice another commonality, which is that historic Albina is included in that north Portland district and preserved. Another, or, sorry, our last commonality you'll see here, if you look at the dark blue district, all communities west of the, of the Willamette River are in the same district. So as we reflect on these common themes and characteristics, I now want to pivot to talking about some of the areas where these maps differ. So there are two key areas of difference that you'll notice across these maps. The first is that all three of these maps must cross the Willamette River in order to achieve the equal population criteria, and that is because the population on the west side of the river is about 20,000 Portlanders short of meeting that equal population criteria. So each of these three maps, guided by different rationales, make different trade-offs in order to assess which communities on the east side of the river best connect to the, to a west district. The Alder map crosses only in lower southeast to include the neighborhoods of Selwood, Westmoreland, Eastmoreland, and Reed. The Cedar map crosses along the inner east side to include the central east side Industrial Council District as well as the Brooklyn and Selwood neighborhoods. And lastly, the Maple map crosses in the central east side from about I-84 to Powell and includes the Buckman and Kearns neighborhoods as well as part of the Hosford-Abernathy neighborhood. So that's the first key difference, what communities on the east side of the river best connect to the west district in order to meet that equal population criteria. The second key difference you'll see across these three maps is the boundary between the yellow and teal districts on the maps you see here, the north Portland district in yellow and that southeast-central district in teal. So how we define those, that boundary differs across all three of these maps. The Alder map uses the neighborhood organization boundaries along Sandy Boulevard to divide, to define that boundary. The Cedar map uses Sandy Boulevard, and the Maple map uses a combination of both, where the Hollywood neighborhood is included in the north Portland district, Rose City Park is in that teal southeast-central district, and the Rosemary neighborhood is split along Sandy Boulevard. So now that I've given a broad overview of the common themes and key differences across all three maps, we can get into each of these maps individually. So looking first at the Alder map, the Alder map is built around preserving established neighborhood association boundaries. It divides the central city among three districts using the Willamette River and I-84 as boundaries in order to promote engagement across these districts with central city issues and economic opportunities, and also to distribute significant assets and institutions among these three districts. The neighborhoods in lower southeast share a district that are geographically and socio-economically similar to communities on the west side of the river, and they are also connected by the Selwood and Ross Island bridges. Looking now to the Cedar map, the Cedar map's boundaries are built around prioritizing transit corridors. This map is built using northeast Sandy Boulevard, southeast 12th Avenue, 82nd Avenue, as well as our MAX lines, because most Portlanders intuitively know these corridors, and by using them as boundaries, this map prioritizes the role of accessible public transit in bringing communities together. So as I mentioned earlier, the Cedar map includes the central east side Industrial Council District as well as the Brooklyn and Selwood neighborhoods. These are, these are the entities included with the west district because they share eight bridge connections across the river to the west and have bus and MAX corridors to the east. Lastly, turning our attention to the Maple map, the Maple map is built around keeping much of the central city together, as defined by the city of Portland's 2035 comprehensive plan. The map also preserves historic Albina, as the other maps do, and adding several inner east side neighborhoods, that is Buckman, Kearns, and part of the Hosford-Abernathy neighborhood. So on this map, the central city includes the city's most densely populated and urbanized neighborhoods where residential and commercial uses are tightly interwoven. East side neighborhoods with a high percentage of renters, again, that's Buckman, Kearns, and part of Hosford-Abernathy, share a district with the west side renter-heavy neighborhoods such as Goose Hollow, Old Town, University, and South Waterfront, as well as the other neighborhoods of the west side. So now, questions for the community. Throughout this process, the Independent District Commission has been committed to ensuring that the final plan is reflective of the priorities of Portlanders across the city, with a specific focus on creating an equitable and inclusive process. Now, the three maps that have been released for your input, oh, sorry, now that these three maps are released for your input, the commission is committed to engaging even more Portlanders, to hear additional feedback, opinions, questions, concerns, and ideas. The community feedback we receive from all of you will be integral to informing the final district plan that we will vote on in August. From the start, this has been a collaborative, or sorry, a collective opportunity for all of us to fundamentally reshape the way our city government works for the better. The gravity of this task cannot be overstated. Not only will these districts determine the makeup of city council for the November 2024 elections, but the map we finalize will be in place until after the 2030 census, and it is our hope that these three draft maps will prompt reflections and reactions about how Portlanders want to be represented in the city going forward. So I just want to understand and appreciate that some of what has been presented today might be new, it might be unfamiliar, might be technical to some, but I hope that our presentation helped give folks a better understanding of the work we've done to date. Lastly, public comment on our draft plan. So before we hand it over to our moderator to begin public testimony, I wanted to share that there are many ways for Portlanders to stay engaged and provide feedback or to ask questions. So members of the community can submit public comment through July 22nd, and if you have, if after today you have additional comments, questions, or thoughts, ideas, you, you or your friends or your family can share comments through multiple different ways. We have an online comment form, you can send an email to districtcommission@portlandoregon.gov, you can call 311, or you can also mail in a written letter to us as well by sending a letter to the Office of Management and Finance. The address there is on the screen, and we shared it earlier as well. And with that, this concludes our presentation, and I will pass it back to our moderator to get us started with public testimony.
Can I do one thing first? Joss and I are not here alone. Can we have the other commissioners raise their hands so the audience knows and acknowledges them? Yes, thank you. So if you have a question that, if you wanted to be a ringer and tap someone, one of these commissioners next to you to ask a question, please do so.
Thank you very much, Commissioners Lorente and Judd. We will now begin our public testimony, and I'm going to explain how it will work. For the folks who did not sign up and you want to provide testimony, you can do so now at the signing table, which is again by the entrance. For the people who have signed up already, you will have three minutes to share your thoughts. When given testimony, we ask that you state, one, your name, two, your zip code or neighborhood, if you'd like, three, if you are testifying on behalf of an organization, and four, that you identify which map or maps you are testifying on. And lastly, if you can please remember to go slowly for our interpreters in American Sign Language and Spanish. And also, I wanted to go over some rules. We want to make sure that everyone here tonight follows these, these rules. Disruptive conduct, such as interrupting someone, not concluding your testimony during the allocated time, yelling, or using foul language will not be allowed. If there are any disruptions, a warning will be given, and a further warning may result in you being removed from the reminder, the remainder of the meeting. We want to make sure that everyone who signs up can be heard, so we thank you very much in advance for helping that all your fellow Portlanders here feel welcome and have the opportunity to be heard. So, so far, we have three people who have signed up for testimony. After everyone who is signed up, is, who has signed up is called, we will ask if anyone else wants to testify. I will begin calling the people who signed up in groups of two, and when it's your turn, please come up to the testimony table, which is located right here in front of the commissioner's table, and has a mic there on, on the side of the table. So the first two people who I have signed up to testify, and please forgive me if I
This is okay? Okay. Hello, welcome Independent District Commission at East Portland Community Center. I wanted to introduce myself and ask you all a quick question. Like you said, my name is Jorge Sanchez-Batista, and I'm a community leader in the Cooley Neighborhood located in northeast, and work here at East Portland Community Center, so if you see my shirt, it's because I just got out from camps. My question for you all today is, will you consider other maps if they seem to be more of a fit than these, or are these three the only options that you are considering? Decided on together, of course. I'm asking you this because after looking over these maps just now and in the past couple of weeks, I've seen that it has a lack of equally distributing the population and are divided. I see that as someone that like cares about their community in Cooley and wants to make sure the new city government will be better and don't divide communities and equal populations and all that, and have like one district represent more people than the other by like a couple hundreds, a couple thousands, like even if it's like five people, that matters a lot. So that's what I wanted to do, and my map that I've seen, I combined all three of what you're talking about, about Chaimet, Albina, Central City, all that is considered, except mine is actually equally divided. Each, each district represents exactly around 167,100 people, so it only differs by probably 10 or 20 people. The last thing that I want to say is, all I ask is that you consider this map or any other map. These three aren't really good options, but that's all I have to say to the commission. Thank you. Are you?
Thank you very much. Next.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chris Koby. I'm from the Pearl District Neighborhood. I am speaking for myself, although I am a member- I am speaking for myself, although I am a member of two groups that are following and have been following what you all have been doing, the League of Women Voters of Portland and the Pearl District Neighborhood Association. Thank you both for being here, and for all the other commissioners who are also here, and they didn't have to be here. I have watched most of your videos, and I also watched most of the video testimony in 2021 on the state legislative redistricting process. I've been interested in this subject for about 50 years. First of all, I want to say that I'm speaking about all three maps, because as a member of the Pearl District, you put the west side in one district, and I think that's appropriate for any of those maps. Thank you very much, so far. The other point, though, is a somewhat technical point. Your first criteria is districts that are contiguous and compact. And although the plan that you released on June 1st has some data on other factors and population, it does not have measurements of compactness, which are fairly common in districting. And the question, or excuse me, the request I'd make of the commission, and I have made this previously by email to the commission staff, and they said, "Ask them," so that's what I'm doing, is perhaps before you reach, maybe after June 23, or as soon as you could, there are about six different ways to measure compactness. And I think it would give people a better understanding of these maps if you put those statistics about compactness out there for all to see. You've done a great job on the plan, I think. I think this would add to people's understanding of that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you all for your work, appreciate it. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I would like to call Susan Lindsay and Sophie Bressini.
I can handle the technical part. Hello. Hello, Commissioners back there, and hello Commissioners here. First of all, thank you very much for putting the time and the energy and the effort into having all these public hearings. My name is Susan Lindsay, zip code is 97214, and that's L-I-N-D-S-A-Y. And I am representing an organization, I'm representing the Buckman Community Association, which is the registered neighborhood association for the Buckman neighborhood. First of all, I just want to point out that every time you talk about the Cedar map, you mention that what it does is it includes the central east side. Well, I'm here to point out that a portion, a large portion of the central east side is included in the Buckman neighborhood. So the Cedar map divides the Buckman neighborhood clearly. And it also takes with it the historic East Portland, the original city of East Portland, which is a historic district on Grand Avenue, is then now somehow transported to the west side representation. But the biggest concern that I have, I'll go back to the Cedar map in a second, has to do with the Maple map. The Maple map, I mean, I get it, I understand that there just doesn't seem to be enough people on the west side to make its own district, so you kind of had to kind of pinch somewhere. But I think this was a poor grab, and because what I read was this idea that what you're going to do is kind of clump renters together. And definitely, the Buckman neighborhood has a lot of renters in it, but this is, this is an issue. Why do you want to clump all the renters together in a new structure that is a district represented that weakens renters? You want to have renters in every district, you want to have them be able to be elected and be represented in all districts, not just in one, and they, I'm not sure that they would be elected. The other thing that has to do with the Maple map that really bugs me, has to do with the fact that the Buckman neighborhood, the Kearns neighborhood, inner southeast in general, votes extremely liberally. So that vote that supported the childcare, the school, preschool for all, as well as the tax on the wealthy to help the homeless, those strong votes came from the residents of Buckman, and they will be watered down in a district that is dominated by the conservatism and wealth and socioeconomic power of the west side. So, we came together, we discussed this for several meetings, and at the June meeting, we unanimously voted that we reject the Maple map. We also reject the Cedar map, because it takes important assets of the Buckman neighborhood and adds them to the west side. So what did we choose? We chose the Alder map. And why did we choose it? Because it makes more sense. It makes more sense socio-economically. There is a real tie-in between the Johns Landing area, the area around Burlingame, the area around Toowiliger, Lewis and Clark College, all of that, and the areas of Westmoreland, Eastmoreland, Selwood, Reedway, they fit better. And when you clump people with high socioeconomic power together, well, it weakens them in a city where you have districts. So I think we're trying to move away from a system where the west side dominates politics, and to where everyone, including far east Portland, where we are right now, and north Portland, in St. John's, where I taught at Roosevelt High School, where those districts have the same amount of clout. And I believe the Alder map is the one that makes the most sense that way. Plus, one last thing, you talk about bringing the river together. We don't have access to the river the way that, the way that Selwood has with Johns Landing. They're really tied together. We have a big freeway running down there, and they're not going to move I-5. So please, take the Maple map, and take the Cedar map, toss them, and if you've got to choose a map, choose Alder. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much for your service, all of you. I'm sure it's been a tremendous amount of work to try to make this work for everyone with all the, your criteria. So thank you very much. My name is Sophie Bressini. I'm a relatively recent resident of Portland, and I live in Eastmoreland. And I respectfully beg to defer with the previous person. So I don't, I represent myself only. I'm part of the Eastmoreland Neighborhood Association, but I'm not representing them here tonight. So, in all the criteria you've used to define the neighborhood, there are four that I noted here, continuous and compact. So if you look at your maps, the southeast district, from which I'm a part of, is butchered every time. There are pieces that are removed. Selwood, Moreland, Eastmoreland belong to the southeast, they don't belong to the southwest. Utilizing, utilize, utilizing, sorry for my English if it's not perfect, geographic boundaries, the river. You have one magnificent boundary, it's a river, it should be the boundary, continue all the way, all the way down. Divide communities of common interest. That's what those three maps are doing in our area. I'm being selfish here, I'm just talking about the southeast, but that's what those three maps are doing. The interest of my neighborhood is in the southeast, that's where we live, that's where we connect, that's where we shop. Ninety percent of the time is spent in the southeast. Of course, we go to the southwest for this or that or other things, but our community of interest is the southeast. And it feels, looking at your maps here, that it's always the southeast that has been on the chopping block to find those extra residents. The, the aspect of the common socioeconomic, I think it's prejudice, honestly. Eastmoreland or Woodstock, there is a lot of similarity. We shop there, we have friends there, I mean, it's, it's, it's all the same, the same thing, and I'm done, so I'm going to say thank you for your attention.
You may carry on a little longer, if you'd like.
A little longer, okay. Yeah, the, the southeast need to be together in all its complexity, all the different socioeconomic groups should be together. There is no reason to chop on this criteria of socioeconomics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, no map, by the way, is really great, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. If, those are the four people who signed up to testify so far. There's one more person, thank you, let me refresh my list and call the next person. Rhonda Sader.
Hello, and thank you very much, all of you who came. My name is Rhonda Sader, and my zip code is 97230. And I'm very new to this process, I've, I've been trying to keep abreast, but it's been from afar. I have a question, and then a comment. Were there any shared employment experiences that were brought into the consideration of the development of these plans? Manufacturing, Port of Portland, inner, the corridor around Daimler, Swan Island, outer east, again, transporta, the Amazons and all of the logistics and that sort of thing, would be one of my, one of my questions. And then, my primary concern in preserving established neighborhood boundaries, I think that's important, but I also think it's a bit last century. Portland has changed the demographics, the neighborhoods, the, just where people live, where people can afford to live. So I'm concerned that with both the Alder map and the Maple map, keeping much of central city together, preserving historic albina community, much of historic albina community can no longer afford to live there because of the gentrification. I'm a former resident, 40 years ago, we lived over there on Vancouver and Skidmore, but we couldn't afford a $500,000, $600,000 home. Real America shops at Winko on 122nd and 102nd. So just saying that Portland has shifted and is evolving, and I'm looking at this, I really think prioritizing transit quarters, where people live, where people work, where people can afford to live, is, is a new reality. And if you look at how neighborhood associations, you look at the makeup of neighborhood associations, and you look at the reality of neighborhoods, they don't always connect, has been my experience. And my other question is, and I don't know if I didn't hear, can these districts change in the future, and is that based on census information? I'm not quite sure. So I have another question also around, are these three maps what we've got to work with at this point in time? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me see if anybody else has signed up, and I don't see anybody else, and there's still one, there's still another opportunity, if somebody feels interested or called to testify right now, please do so by raising your hand.
Are you open to just questions?
Well, the, the format is a hearing, but since we have time, I think we will, we will be able to do that, if, if the commissioners are, are okay with that. And if, if you have, what I'm thinking is maybe the commissioners may begin perhaps answering the questions that the last person testified and posed, and then we can open it up to a few more questions from the audience. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, I think I'd like to take a stab at the compactness piece. That seemed to be a question that came up a lot, I'm sorry. I'd like to take a stab at the compactness, compactness piece. If you look at those maps, and let's just go blue, yellow, kind of teal, and then we go light green. If you had to look at those maps, just curious, commissioners don't answer, but where would you think the most populous, the densest population of Portland is? And what color? Which, which color of the map? Which one? The teal? Gotcha. Why is that?
Because it's small.
Because it's smallest?
Yeah, because you asked, was it the densest? I think you asked, it's the densest. It looks to me, by eyeball, to be the smallest in four districts. I would assume it's the densest because they're all healthy.
Gotcha. So, so what he's saying is that the teal is the densest because it's smallest. And so, in that situation, what he's, and you're right, but you, the effect of creating a small district does not make it dense. What makes it dense is, and going back to your point about compactness, if you look at the northern side of Portland, along the Columbia there, the majority of that is the airport, right? And as you go from east to west, you go past the airport, which is not very densely populated at all, and then you reach to the far west, and you're going to get to some of the runoffs and reserves over there, right? And then, once you come around the top of St. John's, to the blue, the northern, the northern part of the, the west side, that blue section, what's there? It's Forest Park, right? And so, again, not densely populated at all, right? You don't get to more, and that's, that's the situation for much of the west side, because that, the sort of northern part of that is much, is mostly Forest Park, so it's not densely populated, until you get to the southwest area, right? When you go to the far east, out here, you have a lot more industrial areas, right? Again, that land use for industrial purposes takes away from the population density. So what happens then is, that teal part, the reason why we had to make it a small, is because it, that population is so densely populated, there's not a lot of, of, of public land use there, it's, it's basically single-family houses, apartment structures, and so forth. So that's what makes it compact and dense, right? And so, it's given it that nature of being the smallest, because it's the most densely populated. And so, to your point around compactness, the land use, the public land use, the industrialization of it, all drives some of the, what you're seeing in terms of the shapes of the maps, right? Does it make sense?
Yeah, I just also want to add, we also have our technical consultants in the room, Flow Analytics, we have some representatives in the back, so if we have more like technical questions, I know folks would be happy to answer those as well. But, you know, going back through, Jorge asked a question about clarifying the final map process, and questions about how we arrive at the final map. So I just want to emphasize that the final map will be determined by what we hear from folks in these public hearings. So it could be one of these three maps, it could be a combination of these maps, or it could be a completely different map. That will be determined by the input we hear from folks throughout this process.
So, the young man, what was his name, the first one?
It was Jorge.
So I think Jorge was also suggesting, he has a map.
Yeah, absolutely. If you want to email us a link to that map, we can absolutely get that in the record and review that. And I also heard your feedback as well, that you wanted us to prioritize keeping that deviation as close to zero as possible, so that's well heard. Thank you.
Thank you. If, if you have additional questions, I would invite you to please come here, and if you're able, and use the microphone, otherwise, raise your hand, and we can bring the microphone to you. You can group, you can come in groups of two if you'd like, there's two chairs there. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Amanda Monhaddis, I'm a member of the commission. Thank you all for coming out here today, and I really wanted to piggyback off what Commissioner Laurenti just said. I mean, the whole purpose of these public hearings is to hear the feedback on the different maps, and so just to reiterate the point that, coming back to the process piece of, we need nine commissioners to support a final map, and these are three options for folks to provide feedback on. So part of the point is, not to say I want to choose one of the three, but to be able to offer feedback on what you would change about each of the three as well. So just wanted- So just wanted to emphasize that the feedback isn't limited to, I have to pick one of these three, but I think the important point of that is locating yourself and your community in each of these maps, and thinking about what you would change about each of the maps, and go as detailed as you want. But I think part of what I just wanted to reiterate in standing up is that there isn't consent or unanimous, a unanimous decision at this point about what the commissioners would support. Everybody has different perspective, and each of those perspectives drove where we landed in these three options, but that's still malleable. So just wanted to emphasize that folks should continue to provide feedback and should continue to tweak and adjust the maps in whatever way you think would be representative and reflective of your communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pam Elmore. My zip code's 97236. And really, my questions, first, I would just like to say this looks like a pretty overwhelming task, so I do appreciate, I mean, if I had to start from ground zero on this myself, you know, it'd be the rest of my life probably figuring it out. But my questions have to do more with the functioning of our new government. I'm particularly concerned about how does, how do the representatives who are elected to represent each of these districts, how does the city of Portland now, with this new method of government, make agreements with the surrounding cities? Who determines that? Is it the three representatives of a district that shares a boundary with that other city? Is it the entire new commission? Who makes those decisions so that we have these agreements going forward? Anybody have an answer to that?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I eventually believe that this particular commission is set up just to look at the boundaries. So that's kind of, is out of scope for our consideration. But going back to the question about, you know, I think she asked a question to us a little bit earlier about when does the electors, the nominees get selected and how that process takes place? I think there's a lot more information to come in terms of how the actually city will be managed. It's just unfortunately, it's out of scope for what it is that we're doing. I don't know if any other commissioners would like to say anything in regards to that.
I'm sure it's not a big deal, but it just seems like the boundary and who, what other entities that boundary intersects with is going to have to be taken into account at some point, and it's probably a very minor consideration as far as what you're trying to do here now, but it is a consideration at the same time.
Ms. Elmore?
It isn't a minor consideration. It's a very major consideration, because people run back and forth across the bounties all the time, and they pay no attention to the fact that, well, across the street is Gresham, and I'm now in the city of Portland, or down the street is Crickles County, but I live in the city of Portland. So we had hoped that by this boundary read adjustment, that we would force more than just one or two commissioners to do it, and that it has to be a group effort. But that's something that I can't determine. I think all of us hope that it is something that happens. As a process of learning to work together, because with this many people and these many surrounding areas, we have to. Otherwise, we're just going to end up with the same, maybe even worse mess than we have now. Thank you.
There was another question in terms of like, when changes to the districts will be made? And so that will be the next time that the charter is reviewed, so that'll be 2030 is when additional changes will be made, or could be made. Any additional questions?
Yeah, so there were a couple other questions that we heard, and I want to just take some space to address that before we give the floor back to you all for additional questions and comments. There was a question from Chris, I believe, about how we are assessing compactness. That's, to this point, has been a spatial assessment. When you look at the district, does it look relatively compact? And what I heard in your feedback is that you would like us to get more data-specific, more technical about how we are defining compactness, and that feedback is heard. There was another question from Sophie, I believe, about the criterion around being, the districts being contiguous. And that's a great question. So our job as a commission is to make sure that each of these districts meet that criteria as nearly as is practicable, is kind of the operative part of that criterion. So there are going to be instances where we are not going to be able to make a district 100% contiguous. For example, the North Portland District includes part of Hayden Island. There is no way to make Hayden Island connected to the North Portland District, and there is no way to draw a West Portland District that meets any equal population criteria without connecting some subset of communities on the east side of the river. So as you can kind of see in that juxtaposition, there are areas where these criterion are sometimes in concert and sometimes in conflict, and the feedback we hear from you is going to give us some really great feedback about how we make sure that all these criteria are being met as nearly as is practicable.
There was a point around renters, and I want you to know that that point is being heard. Like, we understand that all renters are not necessarily the same, and that there's a great deal of respect that needs to be paid to renters on one side of the river versus the other, and so that's great feedback. I think, you know, as Commissioner Larente just explained, the west side has to jump the river somewhere, and this is going to be one of those things that is going to be the toughest battle. So your feedback and even pushback in terms of where it crosses is going to be important. And so we really do appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I see a hand up. I invite you to please come to the front of the room, to the testimony table, and speak. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Elise Mueller, and my zip code is 97236. I wanted to bring up the point, I'm not keen on the Cedar map, but I've been tossing around the Maple and the Alder, and I haven't heard much discussion around assets in the central part of the city. And so I think it would warrant discussion to ask questions about, since we're going to have three commissioners in each district, do we want the Maple map would concentrate a lot of the city's cultural assets into three representatives, having lots of opportunities to be seen and heard, and have some power in the role of representing the institutions in that district? And I'm wondering if that would be an advantage, or if it would be a bigger advantage, you know, to divvy it up so that you'd have nine commissioners who would be involved with the assets, our major cultural assets, universities and art museums, et cetera? Or would it be better to have them lumped into just one? My preference is Alder, because I think having nine commissioners representing the city's biggest cultural assets would lead to more collaboration, but I have no idea if that would actually happen. It would be my hope, but I think that having a discussion about that power base being concentrated or not is an important discussion.
Now, the commissioners have talked, actually, a lot about asset packing. There was a dedicated session where we were informed about what asset packing has done across the country, and the pros and cons of that. And to your point, it's, you can argue in either way. I think to question it a little earlier, just before you, in terms of like, how one district will manage its relationship with a neighboring city, and how the decision will be managed, you know, what's going to happen is, in any particular district, you're going to have, you know, three representatives. In order for, you know, virtually for any citywide resources to be allocated to that district for a particular problem, that district, even if they have three that are in sync and aligned, they're still going to need the vote of four others in order to have a majority to have those resources allocated. And so, again, that plays into, to your point, you split it and you have nine, and does that work better than having it packed in one district and you have three commissioners saying, councilpeople saying, we want this to happen, and the other nine saying, well, no, we don't want that to happen? So it's something, again, that the commissioners are looking, we're looking for that feedback to help us make a decision that you will hopefully appreciate and hold the city commissioners accountable for.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to ask a question to the commissioners? Thank you. Please come over to the front.
Tom Nielsen, 97205, and I'm just adding, first of all, thank you for the process. I mean, this is, having followed this some huge task. After the process is done for a while, people will forget the criteria of exactly how those borders were done. And so my suggestion is, and in this case Cedar is the most obvious in terms of following sort of natural dividers, because people, you know, if the map ends up looking like it's been gerrymandered, then there's just some confusion about it. Is that in my district or somebody else's district? So the Cedar, I think, probably is following the transit dividers more logically, and I, my suggestion would be that you do honor that as one of the criteria that makes it understandable to people.
Thank you. Appreciate the feedback.
Thank you very much. We have one more question. Thank you.
Janice Thompson, 97201. Actually, thank you for all your work. I actually have a presentation suggestion that surfaced for me just today, talking with somebody who had seen one of the postcards and was confused by the color coding. So if you could flip the slide to the three, the three together. So these maps, by the way, are great, nice, but they're, I noticed that the label is black. And this is, I was talking to somebody who was a very visual person, so he noticed something and I had not noticed at all, which is, he looked at the blue for Alder and thought it was talking about the three different blue sections. And he saw this darker green at Cedar, and he was like, thought it was like those three, and then the Maple, and then he's like, well, where's the label for the yellow? So really, like, a minor item that, as somebody who's not a very visual learner, was very, you know, it was kind of mind-opening to me. I thought I would mention it to you, and it just seems like if those could just all be black labels, that possibility could be addressed.
That's fair.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one more question.
Not a question, a little bit of a comment first. Thanks to the district commission for all your work. Just a quick plug, because I've heard a lot of questions. My name's Jose Gamaro. I sit on the Government Transition Advisory Commission, along with Amy and other commissioners, and we're dealing with government structure, code, all these other questions you have that are not district-related. It's a lot, but we have meetings. If you go to the transition website, you'll see all our meetings. We take public testimony at those as well. So if you have questions about how it's going to work, who's going to decide what, we have staff and people there all the time that can answer those questions for you. So feel free to come up to me or any of the staff members, they'll point you in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. During the era of virtual meetings, we learned that we have to give about seven minutes, or excuse me, seven seconds of uncomfortable silence until we close an item, so that was roughly seven seconds. Thank you very much, everybody. So this concludes our public testimony for today. So thank you all very much for showing up and testifying and asking questions, which, as you heard, will definitely help inform the decisions that the independent district commission will make. Now, we will end our time together by hearing some closing remarks from our independent district commissioners. I will open it up to any commissioner who's here, who would like to share some closing thoughts or reflections on the testimony that we heard today. Do you have one more question, perhaps? My apologies.
So I'm Commissioner Vanceickel-Robinson. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming. I know there are a lot of other options you probably had for this evening. Well, it's cool here, so. But I wanted to say two things. One is that I'm a lifelong Portlander. I was born in North Portland and went to high school, grade school, college in North Portland. And one of the things I've learned in the process of this work is actually how much in common all kinds of different areas of the city have with each other. And as we talk about having 12 council people, I think they're going to find a lot of areas of common ground where they can work across districts to satisfy communities. And the other thing you probably heard tonight is, it's going to be a hard decision for us, and we're not going to please everyone, because there is no perfect map that's going to satisfy everyone in this room, and God knows, everyone across the city of Portland. So just keep us in your thoughts and have grace for the work that we're doing.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Vanceickel-Robinson. My apologies again. And thanks again to everyone who testified today. There's another comment. Commissioner Mike Harris, please.
Thank you. Again, my name's Amanda Monhaddis, Commissioner Monhaddis, and just wanted to encourage you to let other folks in your community know, to show up to the different community meetings. I think it's important not to feel like we have to represent a whole community and, you know, really create situations where folks feel like they can show up, speak their piece, and not have to carry the burden of everybody, and just making sure that there's going to be, I forget how many meetings total.
We have eight more, including the version.
Eight more meetings. Encourage your friends and family and other folks in your community to continue to come and participate. I think that's going to be important. Don't feel like you said your piece and it was heard. I think hearing it over and over and over is really going to be to our benefit. So just a plug to encourage others to participate.
Thank you very much. Commissioner?
Hi, everyone. We've got our natural spotlight here. I'm Marta Hansen, one of the other commissioners, and I also just wanted to encourage folks, as you are leaving, feel free to chat with any of us. And in addition to that, in the back of the room, we have some big Post-its that are up with a couple of prompts. When I look at the maps I like, when I look at the maps I wish, and when I look at the maps what if. So for those of you who perhaps have different styles of sharing feedback and didn't want to get up on the mic, we would really encourage you to share with us what you liked, what you are thinking about, or what you are thinking about or want us to think about, and what you would really recommend. So that's up there. And then on the other side is, we've got the opportunity to do a straw poll. So if it were up to you tonight to pick Alder, Cedar, Maple, or none of the above, just like put a sticker, you'll be able to put a sticker up, and that can help us also just like get a pulse check of where folks are. So just putting that little plug in before you take off tonight. And thank you again all so much for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Hansen.
Apologies. So the questions for community screen that you had, was that just for kind of tonight's general discussion? Or would we forward our responses to those questions to the community on to you all as part of your process?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Both, yes. Thank you. Any, any other commissioner who would like to make closing remarks?
I'd like to say this, always want to thank the other commissioners that have taken the time to dedicate it to this very important work. But also think that Portlanders should applaud themselves for taking the time to really do this very intentional and hard work. It's one thing to say, you know, "I live in this neighborhood." It's another thing to say, "I want to partner with this other neighborhood and share common interests and elect officials and representations with them." And that's the discussion that we're hearing the most as we come out. And so, we've heard very intentional feedback, but it's all been very committed to making Portland work for the best. So it's very much appreciated. And so, for this inaugural districting, I do think that Portlanders should pat themselves on the back for this very courageous step.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Quimore?
I have to put the mic down because otherwise I can't speak in there. For a long time, people said East Portlanders don't participate. You have shown that it's different. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the commissioners? No? Well, as, again, that concludes the testimony and the remarks. I just want to finish by reminding you about the other ways that you have to provide input in addition to attending the meeting tonight. The public comment period closes on July 22nd, so there's still time. And you can submit public comment by emailing districtcommission@portland.org. You can also call 311. You can go online on the commissioners' page and send your feedback that way. That website is portland.gov/transition/districtcommission. So I'll repeat that again. That will take you to the form where you can provide feedback. And you can also, as you exit tonight, you can fill out a public comment card. You can engage, as the commissioners mentioned, with the Post-its that are located in the back of the room and take the straw poll. We would greatly appreciate that. And finally, you can send your written comments to Charter Review at the Office of Management and Finance, 1120 Southwest 5th Avenue, Room 901, Portland, Oregon 97204. So I would like to thank again all of you who came to testify here tonight and to attend the meeting. Thank you as well to our commissioners for being here, to our interpreters and to staff. And this hearing is now adjourned.